Okay, six o'clock, we'll call, we'll have our first, we'll have our public budget hearing. So we'll call that the order. So at this point in time, anybody from the public can comment on the, our district budget that we've proposed. Comments? They're down three.
Do you, yeah, do you want to, do you want me to?
So, just as a summary. The new budget includes two hundred and thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and the management fund. Four hundred thousand for a cash reserve levy. Three million seven hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars instruction. Two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in student support services, two hundred and five thousand dollars in non-instructional programs such as nutrition. One million eighty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars in other expenditures. So that'll equate to an increase of tax rate of a dollar twenty-two per thousand increase. Which would make our district tax rate eighteen dollars sixty-nine point nine cents or eighteen dollars seventy cents per thousand. For this upcoming year. So if there's no public comment on the budget, we will adjourn. The public hearing on the budget, do we have a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor, right? Okay, the public hearing has been adjourned. So we'll move on to our regular meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Somewhat.
Second? All right. And it's been approved. And some items, question on some items. Well, we've been working with the boosters on the student activity fund, so. We got them a lot of information that I think they needed, so I think they want to meet next week with.
Me and Rob and Hans, and then if we have a A D meeting by next week, we'll invite that person as well. And then the boosters, and then they were hoping for a board member to, that could come and Corey.
I've been going, but I probably won't be available.
Uh, Wednesday isn't again?
Wednesday, it's Wednesday at five.
Five. Early for you.
And you don't have to come, they just asked if a board member could come.
I am not available.
Okay. Anybody else? Colette, Kim?
I think it'd just be kind of a information giving and.
Okay.
Does they have a meeting at six, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they just wanted to meet beforehand so they could get themselves, and get us right on the same page with everything. Thank you, uh, Colette. And I, I understand that everybody is busy, so it's, you know, no shade on everybody else.
Are there questions on the sent items and all? Think a motion to approve the consent items? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, right? Don't say no. Sent items are approved. Correspondence?
Do these come in the mail? I might call these correspondence. Um, so these are from the certificates from Iowa School Board Association. And, um, next month is actually School Board Appreciation Month, but, um, School Board Appreciation Week, I believe, is maybe the first week of May, and so we will have. It have already happened before we had our board meeting, so I just wanted to get them to you now and just tell all five of you. Um, how much we appreciate you, and we know this is a thankless volunteer job that you have, and, um, the hours and the time commitment you guys have put in is amazing, and we are so appreciative. I hear horror stories all the time about, uh, school boards, and I just always say, not mine. Ours, ours are fantastic, and I love working with you guys, so, thank you.
Hey, so, public forum. Okay, Sue?
And it is a little out of order for what I emailed you, but it's still. I wanted to, uh, point out the fact because I just saw an Iowa State ad on the news before I came here that reminded me of the thing they're also doing, and I teach for the University of Maryland, and because we had a contract with the Department of Defense, we were required in twenty fifteen to raise all of the standards up to international level. But the other thing that was being done at that time is they decided on concepts for all of the degree programs, they're all coordinated, and they apply to absolutely every class that is taught, and the reason for that is kind of what you see, if anyone has seen the Iowa State Act or they are showing that cross-disciplinary, you know, the cylinder thing. Think wire turn the thing, you know, and then show it does apply across discipline, and they talk across disciplines, so that would be like one example of things being used. But the point is, as individuals, we each have different life experiences and relate to things according to our experiences, that we may grasp a concept a certain way based on certain disciplines, but then we have an opportunity to apply it to other disciplines that we're less familiar with because it's the same concept. We just have to kind of look at it from a different perspective, and that helps to develop thinking skills and problem-solving skills because you're getting more exercise at doing that. My reason for bringing this up again now, because I may have mentioned it sometime earlier, is because of Rob's principal presentation at the last board meeting, it really caught my attention because that's what little I got out of it from the principal's report, it sounded like this was something similar that you guys are expanding to now. Beyond where you're at, and you're having some discussions, not just at grade levels, but now across grade levels and maybe across disciplines to be doing that, so. One of the reasons that it really caught my attention, I'm really thrilled to, uh, to know that Baxter is now working on this. If we could have some periodic updates on that as to where you're at on that. The one example that I did include in the email for you guys happened to be, because everything is now in place, all of the instructors had to spend all last year, well, not all last year, it was only a two-week course. But by the time I waited till after I got through the holidays, waited till last January to register for it, I ended up being scheduled for the middle of October as my fall-based week class was ending, so. Everybody was taking it, that's when my cap and two hit, but you're in there with instructors from a variety of disciplines across the place, so the discussion are great opportunity to be doing things like this. One of the ones, for some reason, I, I connected with the, the math guy and explained how one of his posts applied to a variety of other disciplines. Which got the attention of several others, and they're like, uh, ha, I took off from there, which is the only reason I ever think of, I, I put the little notice at the end of my email of someone worked in, maybe, hadn't come from that because my spring class didn't start until March, so. And the date on that wasn't working much, so it had to been back there in part of the discussions that we were having. So I was really thrilled to hear about the fact that you're starting back here at Baxter. The other thing would be, and I've mentioned this before, is how are you interpreting the data that you are gathering from a variety of issues here? My reason for mentioning is that it's somewhat related to the previous newsletter that you sent out, because you made a comment about, well, in the past, basically, uh, but we were, had made the switch to memorization and now coming back off of that. The aim towards the middle, so you're missing somebody either, and look at how they were interpreting that data, they considered the ones who couldn't use the memorization approach as faulty somehow, so they either didn't test them, data set them, or they didn't count a score. That's not properly assessing the data that you have to improve your decision making. So I just wanted to kind of remind you that as you work on having your extended discussions for teacher fear on the disciplines and the various grade levels, it also has to include figuring out how to effectively assess the data, because it will improve your decision making as you work your way through this, or going to challenge forever, like I know that. We think it's superior and nothing is on the bottom of your goals. So you'll show up in the principal reports here.
My head, thanks.
Sue? Move on to the principals report.
Go to the last group, please. Well, I'll slurp because I have egg safety day on mine that has to, we said it first, because I'm always, that was this last day, and that was. I think, you know, some of the things that we write down, I think we have a lot of great things going on in the classroom, but sometimes some of the most important lessons we teach and the opportunities and the kids really retain are those things that we can do outside the classroom. That was one of them, our FFA kids, nine through twelve took ownership in that. Really worked with young kids, answered questions, presenting, we had both animals machinery, I mean, it was a vast helicopter. Yeah, helicopter, and this, and I heard it, but I. Um, so just hats off to the FFA group for that, that, the last two or three years, they always have a great job, and it's really ramped up, and they take a lot of ownership in that. Um, excited for our fine arts night, that's kind of new to us in the last two or three years, and that's also an opportunity for art kids or music kids, uh, it's the twenty-eights, or a couple Fridays. Um, they've kind of combined, speaking a little bit like Sue, trying to find it, granted, it's all fine arts, but from the speech side to the music side to the art side, and just putting on the night and, and sharing that, so appreciate that. I just sent you guys, uh, the schedule for our senior exit interviews. I'm sure I'll report out next month on that, I think that's something we've done for a while, that it's great that we hold our kids accountable, what I always value more than anything is the feedback they give us. We ask the right questions, they're usually celebratory, but it's also able to pull a few things that maybe we missed the mark, or at least in their perception, we've missed the mark. Um, but it's a great chance for our seniors to bring in friends, family, and just reflect on their high school career, so it's two nights, uh, the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth. So many seniors now, we have to go to three rooms, but I sent you guys that schedule, just always invite you, even if it's to stop in at any of them, but you do not have to be invited to a certain one, and just listen. Either night, a couple of them, they go a half hour, we tell the kids I met with them the other day, but they do great presentations, that Q and A may only last five or ten minutes, if they get a little short in theirs, we keep it going with the Q and A. So thirty minutes, twenty-five minutes for each one, please come out, I think it's just one of the really good things that Baxter does. That says, hey, we're gonna do that to graduate on the stage. As Mike Lynn said, I, uh, thank you guys, the volunteers, I wrote down track volunteers, and I just start thinking of all the things we do around here, um, that people just do their job. And many times it's doing their job in a volunteer basis, and I felt that the other night out of the track, and, uh, I was less stressed than I've been in the last two or three years with track meets, knowing that someone else was really, uh, the go-to person, but you just stand back and watch our kids, our parents, our adults, and maybe not even scheduled for things, and just pick up a rake and pick up a flag. That's just who Baxter is, and it goes to you guys, many of you sitting around here that we've, we just have a lot of ownership in what we do. Um, outside the classroom, a couple, two things, we knew a lot of them, I thought it was really cool, we took a, a, a lot of our high school kids to a poetry Palooza, and anytime my E L A background and I see kids doing the drama, in the speech, in the poetry, uh, that, and they came back, and you always know when they come back, where it was like, eh, or they were really excited. Our kids were really excited coming off, back off the poetry Palooza, uh, and the other thing, our, um, our eighth grade girls go to a girl's STEM at Iowa State. They came back really excited about that, what they learned and how that, what they got to, got to open their eyes to. And I, and to Travis, who takes all of our sophomores to D Mac and Iowa State, just one day, seems little, but you'd be surprised what the wheels that start to turn with kids when they see the D Mac options. We're just getting on Iowa State campus more than going to a ballgame or driving through, so those types of things are what we're all about, that's why we do what we do, because it's what happens and what we're taking with us when we get out of there. Um, I'm sure Hass will talk about I S A S, he's in the middle of it, we finished ours last week, um, don't have results, but that will obviously be data that we'll share in the last group, and I know Julie, I told you I would send you this, it would just save you, I was writing it down again, and I, I, you just say it, can you send it to me? Happy to type it up. We know, we talk about paras a lot around here, and what a paraprofessional is, is a, 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 an adult or senior in high school is coming in and working with our highest needs kid, and the highest need kids, we have a lot of those right now. Kids, our parents are unbelievably good right now, and, uh, hats off, I don't want to list them all, I, I could have, but Hass has them too. And you just see what they do with our kids that have the highest needs, that help them and also help everyone else in that day-to-day operation, because they're so, um, you know, determined and focused with that student. Um, our fed teachers as well, but sometimes we say we can't find parents, and who do we find, I mean, right now, if you could just bottle those four or five that I have, and I'm sure Hass would say the same thing, because we have a high-neat fifth grader that I, that, we had an I E P on and watched what those parents do with them, I was like, we're very lucky, because it's, it's, you know, somebody who's working on an hourly wage that, um, just wants to commit and spend time with kids and grow them, and it, their, their service is invaluable to what we're doing right now, we're really lucky, so just wanted to. Hats off to our parents, that's what I got.
Yeah, I guess I'll start right there and piggyback off that, um, repair situation and how, how unbelievable we are with the people that we have. Our, our teachers just sat famous, we wrote, uh, thank you cards, or the, the awesome cards to Paris, that it was great to see them receive those notes and know that. We appreciate them for all the things they do, it's a, another job that is kind of thankless in that, so we just want them to know how appreciative we are of them and what they do. So hats off to them. Um, one thing on the list, obviously, we have a ton of field trips coming up to the elementary as the year winds down, uh, the list is long, we have to cheat today, it's like, oh my gosh, the whole month of May is like a field trip, it feels like. Um, but one in particular is the fourth grade going back to Omaha, it is an out-of-state trip, so I just want to make sure we've mentioned it here. Um, Rob didn't mention it again yet, we're in the middle of I S A S, um, and Wendy does an amazing job with that, it just feels like a huge weight off our shoulders. Knowing that it's pretty much handled in Wendy's hands, and she does a great job with all of that, and making sure all the test security of the kids and everything technology-wise is handled, pretty, pretty, great, do a great job with that too, with anything in that moment that goes wrong. They're right there to handle it, so there's so many people, so many hands that are so important to us, that all step up with good moments, and I S A S, it's a pretty big moment. Uh, some other happenings in elementary, we did have a group go and visit Bondurant for our elementary, one of the elementaries in Bondurant, to look at a ninety-five percent group phonics program. So looking at a way to bolster our phonics and plenty of awareness, uh, things in the elementary. Um, really what we're trying to do is continue to grow, integrating scientific-based strategies in reading in the elementary, and this is a program that we wanted to take a peek at. Um, so we did, which, watched that, and now we're in the process of kind of gathering and seeing what that may cost, if we can implement it in, in the elementary, so. Trying to branch out, see what's out there, see how we can continually improve in our ways in reading, and I think the teachers appreciate the fact they gotta go watch other teachers do that program and see how it was used, and see the good things that come of it. I will piggyback on that, egg safety day was unbelievable, the ad kids, the FFA kids did an unbelievable job, walking kids from station to station and then teaching them along the way, that was the most impressive part, it wasn't just, here's this, I mean, they were going in-depth, having deep conversations and answering every question that came at them, which is a lot if you have elementary kids, obviously, so. They did an unbelievable job, that was so cool to see, and kudos to Cassie who was running all that, so. One thing that we did have since the last board meeting, we had that asset interview, the people from the state came and did, uh, a Zoom interview with our staff or different cohorts that we put together, and really they were just asking about how, or how the process went into being on or having that designation, what it took to get off of that designation. It was just an interesting process to hear her, and just wanted to hear our story, she just really wanted to hear how we, what were the processes and the things that we put into place um, to get to a position that we are today, um, and I'm sure she'd hear a lot of different ways and a lot of different perspective on that, and she didn't at the time know how they were going to exactly run that, if that was going to be how they wanted to get that out to everybody to see, so we're still waiting on that, but she said she would let us have a first draft and see exactly what that looks like, and then she'll put it out, but um, Mike Lynn was part of that too, so you can kind of comment on that later if you want or whatever, but that was, I felt like she just wanted to get our story and just tell the world of all the things that have taken place here over the last five years, so, I thought that was awesome.
Who, who is she? Was it Dr. Rebo?
What was her name? We can look it up, and, um, we can look up the email.
She's, she works probably for an outside company that does.
This guy contracted through the D E.
Okay, okay.
But one thing, to jump on this with Hass, um, I just kind of assumed that all districts that were on this list just rolled up their sleeves and got to work, and she was really clear, it's like, that's absolutely not the case, she was like, there's a lot of schools that were on that list that didn't get off, and so kudos to our elementary staff for the work that they did, because it sounds like one of the reasons they wanted to talk to us is because our results were atypical compared to all the other groups, so.
Did they take longer to get off the list?
Yeah, and you know, they don't, they make excuses and they don't dig in, and like, our teachers just, you know, were all kind of shocked and sad for a day or two, and then they just were like, okay, well now how do we fix it, and they, they did, they, they jumped in and they just implemented the things that needed to happen, and they're still growing, like, like Zach said, you know, they went to Bondurant to see how, what can we do better, or learn differently for, you know, how do we do phonics, and I mean, they're just they're really just doing a great job down there, and the D E was very, very complimentary, um, just when I visited with her. Just as, she had done several, I don't think she'd interviewed you yet, Zach, I can't remember, had she, I think you were after me. But she, the groups that she had talked to, she was just super, super complimentary about our staff, so I was really proud of that too.
It's a bit of a catch-22 because you actually get money if you call on this list, which, it's not a good list to be on, but then you get a hundred fifty thousand dollars over three years, you know.
Buy the things you need.
Yeah, so. To get off of it, then you don't get the money.
That's not.
And you know me.
I think the money's gone anyway, so now the people are on the list, probably just on the list, have to figure out a way out of it, so.
And I just had a couple more things about, um, just the elementary assembly has been nice, has kicked off the other day, that was led by Casey, but Bree and Amanda do, uh, Mormon do an unbelievable job of putting those assemblies together, making sure they go off the hits, to celebrate our kids, number one, but in this case, it was to motivate our three through five kids to get their medical process, which is awesome, watching the kids walk down the red carpet and get high fives from all the Casey's good kids. Um, so just little things that try to go a long way to motivate our kids to do their best during this week, um, but we'd love to celebrate them too, so. Um, and then the last thing I have is we got their graduation on, um, March twenty-fourth, and so kudos to the great on putting that program and build and put it on the show.
I heard about the red carpet from a third grader who was very excited to be. Getting high fives. Yeah.
It was really cute.
That's a cool idea.
Yeah. And hats off to Taste, they helped, um, get breakfast ready, so we make sure every kid has, has something, yeah. And she did that for Rob's kids too, like, they just took care of it, made sure everybody had a good solid breakfast before the protest.
We'll move on to the proposed district budget. And as we stated before, all the, at the tax rates. Any questions on those or? So that's, can that still change a little bit, Julie?
Yeah, um, that, uh, there could be some adjustments at the county level or at the state level, it won't be at our level. Um, and so, um, the final will come out in June, usually the first half of June, it may fluctuate a a penny or two, or, but it's rarely any more than that. Any adjustment, there were some adjustments that needed to be done, and it was at the county level, and they actually had to send all the evaluations back to Everett County, and they had to redo them all and then re-upload them, um, which is why they've actually extended our budget deadline till May first because of it, um, but we're good, we, we don't need to wait till May first, so.
Questions? Okay, well, do we have a motion to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four district budget, and it's been proposed? Quite a lot.
Probably we have to provide it. We better do.
We have a motion, a second, do a roll call?
John Mercer?
Yes.
Debbie Minor?
Yes.
Colette Kunkel?
Yes.
Kent Tiki?
Yeah.
Corinna Robs?
Yes.
Thank you.
The budget has been approved. Move on to participation in I A S B Safety Group Insurance Program.
So that's, is that our EMC?
Mm-hmm.
So that's just our, uh, property insurance, um, we just are in the I A S B Safety Group, and so, um, we just need to approve that every year. And really EMC kind of is the only show in town, I mean, there's, they almost, I mean, is there anybody besides EMC, or do they do?
There are a couple.
But they're the major insurer for everyone in the state.
We could get any bids on my property insurance from another thing?
I'm still waiting on, um, I don't have a final from the one guy that I think we're gonna end up going with.
Unproperty insurance?
Say it again.
Unproperty insurance?
Yeah, he, um, he's the one that told me he had a couple of them that didn't want to bid it, but he thinks he has some, another company that may bid it. I feel like though, because EMC is a monopoly, and it is sort of a group environment, you know, they spread the wealth or the expense, um, that maybe the smaller companies are not gonna be competitive. We'll just have to see.
So we can still choose whoever, even if we approve this?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Hey, so we have a motion to approve the participation I A S B Group Insurance Program? Motion, a second? All in favor, right?
Right.
Don't say no. Group insurance has been approved. Even in the Iowa School Finance Information Services, this is?
So this is the, um, group that they, they help us build our budget, and, um, they're the ones I met with a couple weeks ago to talk about, um, just some school finance things, and, um, they're, like, the four hundred and eight dollars a year is a bargain, that they, um, just, just the workshop alone would, is worth that, and, um, they're also gonna help us with that five-year projection, so that's included in their fee. So, yeah, it's, they're just super, super helpful and very responsive, they're the ones who put out like a weekly webinar during the session. So, um, like every Thursday, I watch to see kind of their updates of, you know, where the taxes are, but then also like what new laws are kind of in the works, or which ones are, didn't make the funnel, and so they keep us, um, up to speed, and then they say things like, make sure you reach out to your congressman about this thing, and so they're a good advocacy group as well.
Do we have a motion to continue participation in this this?
Somewhat.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Was it in favor, Zach?
Right.
Don't say no. Participation in this, this has been approved. About the online school option for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Yeah, and I, I think we'll just continue to use edgenuity, it works okay for the handful of kids we have, and most of our kids are back, but there are some who really just do online, and, um, that, we've had some that have specifically come to Baxter just because we offer the online, so they're, even though they're doing it online, they still count as our student, so, um, the cost of edgenuity is far less than the seven thousands and change, I can't remember what the exact figure is, but, um, for, that we get for a full-time student. So it's definitely, um, a good thing for us to continue to offer that. And Travis and Dennis, is it mostly Travis and Dennis who kind of manage it?
Yes.
So.
How many do we have?
Full-time online, there's like one or two that I don't know even who they are. I see their names, I don't remember.
That's the opening role that have come to us, they just want to do that.
Or five?
I think you have five.
Many elementary or no?
I don't think so, I think we just have some secondary.
Okay, do we offer for elementary?
I mean, we did during COVID, but I think after that, we really haven't, I mean, it's. I mean, we did during COVID, but I think after that, we really haven't. I mean, it's they could, but it's, it's really a lot more conducive to the older kids.
Yeah.
What we're finding is kids that are struggling here and that's the magic ball. And what we know is that's not going to be it. So we have kids that were not successful here. It's ongoing online and they're not successful online as well. We have some that are very successful online. There are schools that are not providing this option. So that's people asking. The problem we have a little bit is just, uh, um, to meet our requirements for graduation, there's just not as many electives. They get their core for the most part online, but then, I mean, how are they taking ag classes or BACS class? Those aren't there. They get their. It's a really good thing. I mean, we use it honestly for some discipline reasons. Kids that aren't being successful discipline-wise, especially later in the year. You just move them online for parts of the day and say, we're, we're not, where it is, then you just aren't earning credit. You're done. Now we still have to provide that opportunity, but that's a great thing. We'll just be at home the last few weeks and do online. And then, um, there's, we can go into that online, um, curriculum. So let's say kids had a D or, you know, whatever that score is, we can determine how much more they have to do. So it's not like they have to go straight back and start English ten again. We take what they've done. You can, edgenuity really is easy to look at that way to say, here's what we want you to finish to be able to get a passing grade in algebra one or whatever. So it works well for us.
That costs like per people.
Well, we have subscriptions. So we have like for our credit recovery or the kids who are, like you're talking about, like maybe got picked out of a class or whatever. I, I don't know how many, you don't have any subscriptions. She can look it up, but we maybe have like ten subscriptions.
We could have twenty-five kids on edgenuity. They just can't log once. And I, I've never had anybody who'd come back and say, there's a problem. So I don't know if they.
Well, we have five. And we did increase it when COVID came.
Yeah.
Um, but then I think we've just kept it there.
I think we're in a dozen. So all that means is that's how many can be logged in at edgenuity at any point in time. You could have thirty kids taking a single class. They just can't log in.
They can't all do it like first period. Stagger through the day.
And all those online kids, I'm sure stagger. Some of them are doing some work, work, working. So I already know a couple of their schedules and they do a little bit, go out and work, come back and then they have a schedule, but Dennis stays on top of it really well. And Trapp's kind of set, he's the one that goes through edgenuity, but Dennis has been the one that works with the online kids the most.
It's thirty-two fifty a year, three thousand two fifty, but I can't tell you.
Per subscription?
No.
No, for the year, that's a total. Um, in twenty, we had five licenses. And then we doubled it.
I thought it was ten or twelve.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll take a motion to approve edgenuity as our online provider for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
So.
Motion, you have a second? All those in favor, say aye? Those say no? Proved edgenuity as our online provider. So approve seniors for graduation.
So my computer's saying, trying to connect. So is the list opening? Okay, can you guys? Okay.
And I would say if in our for, forever, a long time, all these kids, even if they don't meet the requirement, we'll have a plan for them, which may not happen by May twenty-first. So they all walk. We don't have a signed diploma. We give them, we don't single them out. It's just, this is the group and I, cause I'm looking at at least one, if not two, there would be a coin flip if they're gonna be there by May twenty-first.
Ange told me that she had five, like certificates of attendance that you were, that were gonna have to sign.
Yeah, there's some on here that they're just not getting a bachelor diploma at all, that they're gonna go to graduation certificate. You know how that goes, English and government and this and things and may or may not fall out, but that some schools are just saying, you don't meet the requirement on the last day. We're not walking. We, we'll just work with these kids after May twenty-first. I feel pretty good. I mean, one or two.
That's a pretty good class. We have like forty-four.
Forty-five. Start till line two.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
I thought it was forty. There's the one that wants to, um, there's just unique situations in that group. There's the one in red that will not be part. There's the one name in there that I haven't. That's all online. Travis and Ange probably know what I.
I think that that student, um, went to a different district who stopped offering online. So they met with me last summer and just said, could we, we wanna stay online. We don't really wanna attend Baxter to go to school, but we wanna use your online curriculum and so.
I just want to say that just so when you get there that Sunday or and you see.
Yeah, like with that.
The couple of these people.
But that, the one in red is not actually the one I was talking about. I felt mine finally loaded.
No, line twenty-seven is that one.
Yeah.
You're talking about.
Okay, yeah, line twenty-seven is a kid that doesn't actually attend here, but she attends our edgenuity.
She has family in the district.
Yeah, she opened her own, another district, we'll say.
Yeah, so I think motion to approve the seniors for graduation pending their successful fulfillment of the requirements. You have a second? All those in favor, say aye? All those opposing, no? Seniors have been approved. Down to personnel.
Give me this freedom. Okay, so we have a few resignations for various reasons, but, um, Joe Amadeo as high school associate teacher and head wrestling coach. Tammy Hoffman is middle school science. Ashley Jacobs, Ashley Jacobs as elementary teacher and middle school volleyball. And Christie D as high school volleyball. Do we wanna add? Do we have anything official from the one that we got today? Does that email count?
Um, no. No. We'll need a resignation.
She sent that email.
Well, I understand that, but.
I haven't.
Okay, so we'll, we'll sit on that one. Um, so the rest of these.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignations as presented.
I'll second.
Motion, a second, we have, uh, those in favor, say aye for the resignations.
Aye.
Those say no? Resignations are approved.
Okay, and then we have a contract for Dana Buckland as middle school softball coach. And, um, I don't, Rob didn't talk about it, but we've had, um, some interviews this week and then past has had some interview or so, some in-house interviews. So, um, so, some of these are pretty close to being filled. Some of them are not, but.
Oh, for the.
For the, the resignation.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we will. Offer social studies.
Oh, good, okay.
It'll be done. So if you're worried about that, we stayed out in front and we kind of knew the resignation was coming. So I asked and I brought some people. Luckily, it was quick.
Did you get the one you wanted?
Personal studies?
Yep, and.
And the other.
Fill that P D Q real quick.
Good, okay, very good.
Science is a struggle.
Yeah.
A big struggle.
Well, there's one.
Well, it's one that, yeah, I, somebody else I was proactive with and came in and sold really hard. She was sold her car.
I know, we've kind of won two pawns. I happened to run into her in the hall too.
We'll see. That one's, that one's tough. We, we had almost twenty applicants for social studies, yet zero for science. How weird is that? It's just the curriculum area. And again, we'll say, so lucky we're out in front of like math and, and they're, they're not out there. So I'm, I'm just really pleased right now.
I was a little surprised. PCM just hired a second voag teacher.
Is the first one already like?
Is saying.
Talking all this ag teachers.
I was shocked.
Did they?
That they found somebody.
That, so they found, I knew they were looking for two because they're adding when they found both of them.
Of one anyway, because, um, they put it out there, they're negotiating extended contract days. And was, was asking all of us what we offer.
I think because we don't hold the contract, we also had a council resignation. But is that why that's so?
Yeah, we.
Yeah.
Council position, Sherwood Colfax, Mayo, is now open.
She took a job in like a full, like a one district. She's going to Martinsville, I think. So she'll just be in one school. So, um, we plan to, uh, interview with them.
Zach and I think we have a better, where that position was all K five, where we, we could use some middle school at-risk help. Hard to have a Colfax Elementary and then think that they're gonna do high school because that person just doesn't bid that long. But we talked about maybe like a four-eight and helping maybe upper elementary, but being middle school focused, we're gonna get some help out of that position if we can find somebody. Share it. My son, he's been talking with Colfax on that position.
I talked to their soup, um, at a meeting, a couple of days, maybe last week, but not lately.
I, I heard it's posted.
Let's check on that tomorrow. I'll make a note that to talk to them.
Respect the contracts. Just the need to prove Dana as the middle school softball coach.
I make a motion to, to contract Dana Buckland as assistant middle school softball coach.
In a second.
Motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those say no?
Kim, were you trying to ask a question?
Well, I was gonna ask if we have a head softball middle school coach. Is it?
No, that's.
Stop, middle school?
Just, aye.
Is it? I wondered, I couldn't remember if we have approved that one yet.
Heather?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay.
So who are you still looking for?
Is it middle school baseball? Baseball, I think. Have they not found baseball?
Baseball's a problem. Middle school. Okay, um, I think, um, they're gonna have Prentice Nelson do it, is what I've seen.
Oh.
You see the emails? I thought you were part of the emails. He's gonna do both. He's gonna assist a high school and.
And then coach middle.
That's my understanding.
Playing baseball somewhere, man?
Yes. Central.
Yeah, yeah.
He may not be playing, you know?
Yeah.
Like he did last year.
Maybe.
For two years ago? It hasn't been that long, has it?
How old is he?
So two years. Yeah, he'll be in June.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, open enrollments. Move on to open enroll.
All right. So we have Michelle Prior for her children, Lilia Dunn and, um, Robert Peterson. Um, for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year from Newton. Um, do we want to do these together? How do we?
You're gonna have to do that one.
Okay, we're gonna do it, it's separate. So Michelle Prior for her daughter Lilia, who's gonna be in kindergarten. Um, for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, coming to us from Newton. And then also.
Which is regular.
Just regular ed, no, uh, special education. And then we have Ryan and Carrie Frazier for their son Cole. Ninth grade to attend Baxter as a full-time student rather than for extracurriculars only. So those two, I recommend that we approve. Do you want to do that first?
Let's take that.
Okay.
Other questions?
For that, for Frazier or whatever. Is that for next year or is that to begin immediately?
Next year.
Maybe next one.
Yeah. And the other one, the little girl that will be a kindergartner is for next year as well.
I'll make a motion to approve those two open enrollment in applications. As presented.
I'll second.
Yeah, the motion's second. We have, all those in favor to approve Lilia and Cole. Those say aye?
Aye.
Those say no? Two applications are approved.
And then we have another application, open a roll in for Michelle Cryer for her son, Robert Peterson, who's in fourth grade. Um, and he has some special needs and we don't have space in our, uh, special education department. And we don't have any paraprofessionals available. Uh, so I would recommend that we deny that, uh, open enrollment. For the twenty-three, twenty-four school year from Newton.
The motion to deny the open enrollment in for Robert Peterson?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, you have a second? All those in favor, say aye? Those say no? Open enrollment in for Robert Peterson has been denied.
Okay, and then the last one, we have an open enrollment out, uh, Morgan Magana. Uh, for her son, oh gosh.
Austino.
Austino. Jorge Vasquez Magana, uh, kindergarten to attend Newton where, um, his siblings already attended. So I recommend.
And this is just a FYI. So we don't have to.
Oh, we don't prove it? Oh, okay. All right, so just for information.
He's never attended here and he has siblings that already.
So, so these grounds transportation on top of Dawn's list.
Yeah.
Wow.
And so, um, I just wanted to remind you and then have it publicly on our, um, our video. That's okay, Dawn. You're good. Um, so we've agreed, we, every year, we set aside five thousand dollars to do a joint project with the city and the last several years, they haven't been able to, um, we haven't been able to do one together. So we just continue to set the money aside. So this year, um, the city does have some money and so they're gonna put up thirty thousand dollars and we're gonna put up thirty thousand dollars. And this is from our Pupple and Save account. Uh, so different from the general fund. It's not money we could spend on teacher salaries or pay rise or anything like that. It's only for projects like this. And so, um, we're gonna put up thirty thousand and they're gonna put thirty thousand and then we'll use that to pave, uh, the parking lot uh, over across the street at K C Park. And that would be a benefit to both of us because we can use it during the school day for excess parking overflow parking for games, that sort of thing. And then, um, the park can use it during, whenever, you know, during the summer. And you know, they can use it during school day too, but it'd just be more parking because we know parking's always a problem. And we've got kids parked all, and, and adults parked all around the the school on the road. And, um, it would just be a really, a good use of the money and a nice, um, joint effort between the school and the city. So. Think, do we have to approve that or like make a motion?
I would.
Okay.
And then in that, in that city meeting, they hear, I thought I heard him said, mentioned something about moving the splash pad.
Yeah, but forward, I think.
But not where the parking.
No, I don't think so. I think it was, is it originally like pushed back quite a bit further? I think they're maybe.
I heard her say south. Parking.
But it sounds like it's coming right along. I mean, if you drive by on the backside, they're working on, um, the shelter house. It was interesting. They said the shelter house, the roof comes all in one piece. So they don't really wanna finish up the insides until they get the roof like plucked on it. Then they can finish the bathrooms and stuff. So. Yeah, it's kind of, it's coming along. It's for sure. It's, it looks great over there.
Start parking this year. It seems like it's worse than it was last. Last year I was just amazed at how seemed like it worked smoothly. Now we're, this year, it's part, I mean, is that maybe more kids driving this year or something or?
There could be.
Numbers of kids. I mean, it's the biggest high school, you know, these two juniors.
Junior.
And we have so many more, um, school permits. It's the highest we've ever had of school permits. It just seemed like there's more vehicles around this year than why.
Yeah, it seems like.
I thought last year it was like, great, you know, it's, it's worked out good. And then this year it's like, bro. I used you down because the junior, senior. I use you down because of junior, senior petition all the time and that should be a junior, senior only lot. Remember you had that conversation saying get those.
And I am, I mean.
But they get mad.
There's a few spots on the west end of the grid in that scene like.
Well, you'd think that the teachers would take that and open up.
No, I mean, it's that lot and it's everything on the other side where they want, that's on city park.
Do we know how many spots Casey Park parking lot, did they say that night would offer?
Bryce said one time and I don't recall what.
I remember seeing a sketch or thing, but I don't know if that's accurate or if it's just.
I remember talking to Bryce about it too. And I remember when we had, when we first were in the building project, went out there and marked off and just thinking, well, we could have done.
I think it'll be a great project. And Bryce, the city's taking the lead on it, Bryce is gonna um. Get it all lined up and going and all of that.
Will that parking be available then? When would that be available?
Like when will be done? I, I guess I didn't say, but I would think, I mean, Bryce or um Brian called me two days ago. And wanted to get our blessing of the day, emailed you guys just saying, hey, just remember we're gonna do this. Um and because Bryce that day was gonna call the people and get on the, the list, so they must be like. Getting on it. I just don't know how long the waiting list is or anything, but they wanted to get moving on it. So I, I would anticipate, this is a guess, but I would anticipate this summer it would be. You know, they'd be working on it.
Another great drop in new teachers.
Put that on my teach Iowa house.
So we have motion to approve the thirty thousand dollars from the Pebble, save accounts for the parking lot, Casey Park. All those in favor say aye. Close say no. Thirty thousand dollars been approved.
Going last, the guys always steal all my thunder, but um. I, I just really, again, like that, we had that city school uh board meeting and it was just really good. It's just so nice to hear the things going on in our community and so many exciting things to come. And it just really fills you with hope or like what, what things could come, you know, um just hearing about what's. Like Bedco's got going on and Jasper County Economic Development and the park and the library and just so many good things. The food pantry, um we just really are fortunate. This is a great community and I just, it's just reaffirmed. Every year when we do that uh joint city school meeting.
Like, I think you left already on the chief dag at the end, he's like, you know, I've been doing. Public meetings for thirty-some years and you know, this is like, there's no harsh word, there's no, no arguing, it's just everybody's getting along and. So I mean, to have a kind of a, a new guy come in and recognize that is pretty cool, so and stuff we already know, but it's good to, can have that.
Um yeah, and so be like, we've been working on, like we said, um filling the open positions. And we're really trying to get creative on how, how can we fill some of these openings without hiring new people? So um we know it's a, a big deal to raise taxes, nobody likes that and we all pay taxes in this community. So um we're trying to be as efficient as we can. So we have a couple retirements and with those two positions, we're. You know, you're looking at the people that are on this table who are taking on a lot of those duties and we've asked, a couple of our, our secretaries are taking on some things and so. Um people have been very willing, but um we know it's, it's taxing, but we all, or I shouldn't say taxing, we know it's hard. Um but we know it's the right work and so, and we know it's not forever. We're just trying to get um, just get back on the right foot financially. So that we can um really like evaluate our system and say, okay, what is it that we need to replace, you know? Just because somebody leaves doesn't mean we automatically need to replace that, maybe we need to replace it as a combined position or combine it with some other things. And so we're really trying to look um creatively at how we can build these positions efficiently. But like, we all think it's important to make any cuts that we can or. Absorptions we can as far away from as the kids as we can. So that's why, you know, when Zach's talking about. Uh hiring teachers or Rob's talking about hiring teachers, it's okay that we're absorbing some of the. You know, kind of leadership things, the transportation, you know? You might be looking at the new transportation director, I don't know, we're still trying to figure this one out, but. But that's something away from kids. I mean, obviously we need kids to be able to have buses, we need them to be able to get to games and field trips and all that, but. We need teachers in classrooms more than we need a person to do that. So anyway, um just, just know we're working on that the best we can. Um and then like Dawn said with the school safety, um there's just a million uh parts to this grant. So we're getting quotes and we're um working with the Department of Ed and uh. There's a lot of hoops to jump through, but we, we know that it's very important and, and with that vulnerability assessment. Um some of the things Dawn pointed out, we're absolutely on there and there's a few others that are also on there that we're looking at. Um so that's been pretty consuming. It seems like it's, that's all I ever talked about is I'm working on the safety grant, but. It's a big deal and so, and we know, I mean, school safety is incredibly important and it's on everyone's mind, like seems like every day you see on the news another. School shooting or work shooting or church shooting or whatever, so we're aware of that and, and we take it seriously. Let's see, oh, that's our problem, Dawn talked about that already. Um the last thing I wanted to talk about is. Now that we're having uh smaller crowds come to our board meetings again. And with the echo like Sue was saying, it's sometimes we have been getting some complaints because people just can't hear very well. Um I would recommend that starting in May, we move back to having our meetings in the boardroom. And we can still, of course, have guests and it um join us in the boardroom and if there ever isn't something that, you know, a lot of people wanna come and, and talk about. Or we think could be a, you know, an issue that people wanna talk about, we can move back to here or we can move to the library or something. But for the most part, if it's just us and Sue and maybe another, one or two other guests, we'll have plenty of space in the boardroom. So starting in May, if you guys are okay with that, I want us to move back to the boardroom. And that's one last thing, you know, we, we're short-staffed in the uh custodial department and this is, you know, uh Tammy. Spent time today getting this all set up and rearranging the furniture and that's just one less thing that the custodians would have to work on, so. That's about it. Any questions or anything? Yeah, we're just really like, look, the two guys said all those things, ISAF's a big deal or um CIA team's meeting tomorrow. To talk about some planning things, we're, we're really starting to look at those full day PDs for next year. Uh Dr. Anderson's done a great job of kind of sketching out kind of a rough skeleton of how those days will look and. I think it'll be some really good stuff, so we're excited about those. Otherwise, that's about all I got for you.
Next, we've gotten the initial proposal from the BEA.
Do we say that out loud? Okay, um so the, we, we got the initial proposal from the Bachelor Education Association. So for salary with the health insurance increase of sixteen point nine percent for the school year twenty-three, twenty-four. They're asking for a one thousand three hundred dollar increase on the base salary with corresponding step and lane movement on the salary schedule. Hundred and eighty-nine day teacher contract for the year twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four. For a total package increase of four point zero eight percent, not including the revised insurance increase. Revised base to thirty-four thousand two hundred ninety-five for the twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And do I say the negotiators? So that's what the BEA is asking for.
That hundred and eighty-nine day contract, is that consistent with prior?
Yeah, yeah, that's what they all.
So at this time, we will go into an exempt session, discuss the initial proposal and. Have some discussion with the board, so that'd be a closed session. So we'll move to the boardroom.
I'll make the motion, we go into exempt session for purposes of discussing the um. BEA's proposal.
I'll second.
Yeah, motion second, all in favor, aye? Close say no. We'll enter exempt session at seven eleven.
For anyone watching, I'm gonna go ahead and stop this because we won't, um we won't turn it back on after the close session. So all we'll do is come back out of closed session and then we'll just end it, so um appreciate everybody logging in.